Why dear God, just pray your Lord that you would just be with our school system dear Lord. We're here at the end of this school year dear God. I pray your Lord for the kids as they go into testing dear Lord and their teachers dear God. They finish preparing them for that dear Lord, just give them comfort dear God and they have time to make it so stressful dear Lord. I pray dear God through this morning days that they make decisions dear God that will affect the future of our school. I pray dear God that you just give them wisdom and guidance in the choices that they make, the corrections that they choose to go through God. Just thank you most of all, you pervert your son Jesus for his salvation dear God and for the life that he's given us dear God. Just let us live in worship by you. It's in Jesus' name that we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for today? Do I have a say? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, I guess I gotta do these one at a time or can I do them all at once? All right, do I have a motion to approve prior meeting minutes, March seventh, two thousand twenty-four? So do I have a say? All in favor? Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four? So do I have a second? Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve the April sixth, two thousand twenty-four minutes? So do I have a say? Second, second, all in favor? Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve the April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four minutes? Do I have a say? All in favor? Any opposed? Ms. Sharlina, do we have anybody signing up for public comment? Do I have a motion to close public comment here? Do I have a say? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, reports and discussion items. Mr. Matheson, go ahead and start us off.
So we have a band concert tonight at the high school auditorium. That's at six o'clock. So we'd like to invite you down to be part of that. The middle school and high school bands and the chorus performing. Last week, we had senior celebration, May the second there at the high school. I think we had about roughly eighty percent of seniors showed up for that and it was a good morning. August the prom was on Saturday night and then went well there. The best thing about it is I was enrolled in the prom. So my office was pretty much, but I think it'll be good. Coming up, we have an academic banquet on May the twenty-first. That all award members that are invited to that, please make plans to attend and you can bring your spouses with you if you choose to. And that will be six o'clock dinner and seven o'clock awards. In early June, in our guidance office and the principal's assistant principal's offices will be meeting, start meeting with freshman parents to set up four-year plans for all incoming freshmen for next year's class. And so we're sending out information to parents about that. Our testing starts May the twenty-third. We'll have a testing on the, our state testing, our E R seeds will be May the twenty-third and May the twenty-fourth. And then following week, they have a reward day. We'll have our teacher make final exams, a C D test. But we have pretty much, I mean, we're getting close to the end. We've got a couple of weeks left. So kids, we're trying to get them in there and make time, things like that. We're gonna have fielding at the high school on May the seventeenth on Friday. Ask you all if you can come down, be part of that. It's gonna be fun for the kids. Please come in that day generally worn outside. I'll get started on nine to nine thirty. Athletics, it's May the twenty-third and that is the middle of six o'clock in the commentary room. And then at seven o'clock, the awards at the auditorium. As far as athletics goes, our baseball team finished up the season last week. Kind of has a rough week. They didn't qualify for the playoffs for the first time in many years. Had a really good season in there and they were supposed to play today in Collinsville, but they got a call this morning and they said they had got big little rain twice yesterday down there. Their field is under water and so that's been a problem until tomorrow. So they'll play at Collinsville tomorrow evening at six o'clock. Our softball team won the Smoky Mountain Conference championship undefeated in the conference. Again, had a fantastic year and they will play in the first round of playoffs today. The track team participated in the regionals or will be participating in the regionals this upcoming Saturday at Montry over in Asheville. And the Collins track team last week, Zoe Schuler was named the most valuable player of the Collins track league. I think she won the long jump, the triple jump, one hundred meters and was second in the high jump, I think. So she had a wonderful day. Hopefully she won several championships. Maybe she'll win a regional championship and sports day championships in the coming next couple of weeks. And in golf, this past couple of weeks ago, Isaiah Round became the first Robbinsville High School golfer to win the Smoky Mountain Conference Golf Tour. And then yesterday he competed in the regionals and he shot seventy-eight. Qualified for the second year in a row to go to the state golf tour, which will be in kind versus next Monday and Tuesday. So in our golf team, finished second in the course. They had a really good year considering we have B and J Philorn. That's all. And let's see, Matt Lord again is May the twenty-ninth, waiting wire for the guest speaker that night. That's eight o'clock, we hit the football stadium and the graduation is May third and fourth at eight o'clock. And just found out last Friday from an original C P director, now I hire them next year. At C P we will have a monitoring visit in the fall. So we know to check out everything we've been doing. Make sure we're logged with the law. I'm not really worried about that. I live down in a religion, so that's all I'm thinking.
Okay, Ms. Walsh.
Hi, I'm like Mr. Matheson. We are nearing the end as we are trying to prepare for testing. A lot's going on at the middle school also. We will have our testing starting on the day sixteen. We will have field day on the fifteenth. We'd love to have y'all join us if you can. And we had last Friday, the chorus did a performance for middle school, which was awesome. It'd be an opportunity tonight to come to the band and chorus concert. You will really enjoy it. We posted some of the videos on our Facebook and I think one of them of the N M has been viral. And it was really good to see our young kids, you know, performing and gave them a lot of confidence. And so it's well worth your time tonight if you can make it. Athletics is looking great for Graham County schools. Our girls softball team, they finished the season undefeated. Next week, they're supposed to play in the local championship game, but that will not change how they finish for the year. Our boys are in second place right now. They lost three games for the season and they have a game tomorrow night. But as of right now, they're second year in the conference. And the track team between the boys and girls teams, they broke fourteen records this season, school records. And the boys won conference and the girls placed fifth. They went to a state meet last weekend and it was one A through four A. And Chloe Adams, she scored enough to finish seventeenth in the one A through four, which is very impressive. And of course, the only team in the one A division and scored more points than us was no other than the Tar School and Mount Mount Tarter. So but other than that, our schools scored the most points. Let's see what else is on here. Summer school, we will have summer school that's funded by GEAR Up. That'll start June tenth through the twenty-first. It's two weeks. Then Twenty First Century will also have summer school. That will be June tenth for six weeks for the rest of the season. And I think that is.
We have had kindergarten registration for next school year and we've had, since kindergarten registration, some folks that have kind of filtering in. We're hovering around seventy that has been enrolled so far. And just a reminder to anyone who might be listening virtually, if your child will be qualified by August thirty-first, then you are qualified to register to kindergarten. If you don't have all the required immunizations and paperwork, you can get that in later. But if you plan to send a child, if you can go ahead and fill out a enrollment form, that helps us know if you have a plan. Because as the board knows, with the class size law, one child registering can mean that I'm going to create an entirely additional kindergarten class. So the sooner we know, the better so that we can have that plan in place. So we are working to get that information out regularly. So we're trying to get everybody that is eligible to come so that we know how we need to plan on. We had moving up to mid-school last week where preschoolers and anyone who was registered for kindergarten came come. They met the teachers, they walked through the halls, they saw the classrooms. Of course, we'll have open house at the beginning of the school year as well, but this is just a chance to get them ready to get them excited about coming to kindergarten. Our E G O field day finishes this Friday. That's where students have an opportunity to stay after school with their regular teachers and do some of that extra prep to be prepared to do as well as we can on the test. We've had some really good participation, so we're excited about that and Friday will be the last day. Our R E S field day is this coming Friday, the tenth. So if you can, you're welcome to join us for that and kids have a blast. And we are getting ready for end of the year. The elementary school, high school will start testing on the sixteenth. And just working on all the things that are required for end of the year. While we're also ramping for summer school and the elementary summer reading camps for second and third graders. The information has been sent home to families and we're also working to get that up and running June tenth, thirteen, twenty.
Ms. Meyer, do you have anything for us?
Do you know what we're going through right now? We've been extra busy with the new information system, student information system that we're going to roll out from the state. So we're getting more information out to parents and teachers about that. Other than that, or things we want to look at, hopefully we'll say that way.
Thank you. Ms. Sun, do you have anything for us?
I'm sorry, I haven't been working with Dr. Karen Fairley from D P I. And Wheaton, Greer County has selected along with Ashken County to participate this summer in a safe schools leadership program. I was asked to pick students to attend this from our middle school, high school. We have twenty-six students selected. D P I will be doing a face-to-face orientation for those students and their parents on May twenty-eighth through high school. And then we will start in June. They will come up three different weeks, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday here. We're with our students on topics like helping out the reading, bullying, anything that falls under the safe schools. And then on July the thirty-first, August first and second, they are sending our children to Wilmington to the state conference for safe schools. They will get to present what they have put together here and when they get home, they get tape for all that. So really important.
Thank you. Ms. Metz, you have anything for us? I know you're on the agenda.
Yes, in the way of preschool, we have been accepting the application for preschool for quite some time. We are articulated that we have to buy it through our screens. We have all the kids eligible for the N C three K that are there. We are taking applications on a label list. So we're very excited about that. I'm worried that I would like to talk about it. And May the thirtieth is our graduation for preschool. It'll be at six o'clock at the R H S auditorium. And also I'm about to attend that as well as on the May the tenth, we have a preschool day, field day over at the high school. So we're going to let them do some level of fun activities over there this year.
Thank you. Ms. Wavens, you have anything for us?
Good morning. I have data to present to you as we try to each month. And I wanted to call to your attention that the very last two pages in your packet, we had a couple of individuals on our team who were absent for the month of March. So those last two pages that you see in there should be March data for those individuals as well. The couple of good news items that I wanted to spotlight. We have recently had a meeting with representative from the State Farm insurance office out of the Murphy area. They have for many years had what they consider a shoe fund that has raised considerable amounts of monies to put back into the school system for children who have these for shoes, things that we sometimes take for granted. They have met with us and we'd like to extend some of those monies in the Grand County. So we're very excited. Mr. Green was able to meet with me yesterday. We have already established our shoe fund now in Grand County and we've had our own donation on our house college. So we anticipate that that will continue to grow and that students have these. Sometimes they don't grow the shoes. Sometimes they just don't have the sufficient funds at home to pay for any of their shoes. We now have some funds allocated for that. We're very excited. The other good news I've been wanting to bring to you is that we just recently received an email from the Great Smokies Foundation. Brian Husky is the director of that foundation and we were one of four school districts sent an invitation to us at four of four to begin our request for proposals and how we can perhaps maybe tap into some foundation money. So we're excited to be able to write some proposals to strengthen our help. So we will keep you posted. I think that date for to be sent in is July the seventeenth. So hopefully between now and May. And if some will have some good news to report back to you.
Good. Thank you. Did I miss anyone? I don't think I did. Field trip from West Presidents.
I've got three. Go ahead, Mr. Matheson. So the first one is for Ben Davis for the Si girls. It will be June the first through the third. And it will be a trip to North Carolina Zoo in Ashburn, the North Carolina Museum of Natural Science in Raleigh. Working on a state university campus. And it will be, the chaperone will be Ben Davis, Amber Davis and Mandy Adams. So that is for the Si girls. Not just like to say that Mr. Davis has had this plan for several years now and it's been fantastic. It's done. Kids have got lots of opportunities through this, but I think this has gotten the last hurrah. Money's running out and it's come to an end, but it's been a really, really good opportunity for our kids. Both the elementary kids that have served and the high school kids that have worked in that program. I appreciate Mr. Davis and what he's done with that. The other two field trips are GIRA trips. The first one is a scholar development day, a trip to U N C A. It will be five ninth grade students, June the third and the fourth. And chaperones will be Francine and Kent Williams on that trip.
What's the dates?
June third and fourth, U N C A. And then the next one is the GIRA bus trip across the state. And that is July the fifteenth through the nineteenth. And there we visit U N C Greensboro, N C State, U N C Chapel Hill, Duke, U N C Wilmington and Cape Fear Community College. And there will be ten R H S students going on that field trip. And the chaperones from Roswell High School will be Danny Webb and Brittany Pinder. They will be on a bus with students from other schools, chaperones from other schools in the area that are part of GIRA. That's the three. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the field trip for Si girls with Ben Davis on June third, June first through the third to North Carolina State? So do I have a say? All in favor? Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve a GIRA trip scholar development, June third through the fourth to U N C A? Do I have a say? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and then one more. Do I have a motion to approve the GIRA trip, July fifteenth through the nineteenth? And I forgot all the universities, but U N C, T and U N C and Duke.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
U N C. Across the state. Do I have a motion to approve that trip? Do I have a say? All in favor? Are there any more field trips? Okay.
Yes, I have a field trip for Ms. Joanne Knight. It will be June the third, fourth and fifth. Or fourth, fifth and sixth, and this is for a grant that she has received. They will be taking twelve students. There will be three adults and they will spend three nights or two nights and three days in Case Cove. They will be doing ranger activities and then five people at Case Cove on the day that they happen to have cars and traffic. And so she will be working for Project Discovery out of Western Carolina University who takes our kids in the spring on a camping trip halfway. So it sounds like a great trip for twelve.
Yeah. Do I have a motion to approve June fourth through the sixth, a trip to Case Cove with Ms. Joanne Knight? It's with Project Discovery. Do I have a motion to approve that trip? So do I have a say? All in favor? Any opposed?
Well, I'm gonna read this for Michael and Parker. There are two field trips for the Twenty First Century After School and Summer School Program. This is for Stickaway Valley Center. They're out-of-state trips. One will be on June third to Wonder Works in Virginia Forge, Tennessee with twenty students, three staff and one bus driver. And then the second will be June fifth to Knoxville Zoo in Knoxville for twenty students, three staff and one bus driver. Stickaway Valley Center, summer program.
All right, do I have a motion to approve out-of-state trips, June third to Wonder Works in Virginia Forge, Tennessee? Twenty students, three staff and one bus driver. So do I have a say? Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve a June fifth trip to the Knoxville Zoo in Knoxville, Tennessee? Twenty students, three staff and one bus driver. Do I have a say? All in favor? Any opposed? Any more field trips? Wish I had a room for myself, though. All right. Budget amendments. Mr. Green.
Okay, I've given you a couple of packets of information, the budget amendments, you know, for the eight and a half by leaving. There are two pages there. The first page is budget amendments to the state public school fund. Mr. Lynn, I'm gonna, I'm gonna point you through this, how I'm going across the spreadsheet. The top label there will let you know that that's the state public school fund, the three budget amendments before. What I'll do is I'll look at the column there that says description of code. As I go down and I'll look at the sections down in the bowl. And what I'll do is I'll identify you different plots of funding that we receive. You'll see something there called P R C fifteen. That's a program reporting code and that's, that's just a number existing to identify different plots of money that we receive through the state public school fund. The first section there, this is a budget amendment to P R C fifteen, the school technology fund. Just above that, Mr. Lynn, you'll see a revenue there on the description of code. Scan the words to the right. That's how much additional lots we receive. That's one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. We plan to use that to supply the materials. I'll do the rest of these descriptions of these budget amendments in that same manner. So the next section down is P R C sixteen, that's summer reading camps. We received twenty-seven thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. We plan to use that for salary benefits for the summer reading camps at the elementary school. Next section down, this is an A B C transfer. There's two P R Cs. It's above this, P R C twenty-four. It's the supplemental student funding program. We previously had an employee in that position for twenty-five years of service. Now we have an employee in that position that has three years of service. So their salary benefits are less than what they used to be. So within the last two years, we've been able to reallocate the supplemental funding student funds and use those through an A B C transfer and move them into P R C twenty-seven to use for our teacher assistance. So this is simply reallocating funds. We're taking twenty-three thousand out of supplemental student funding and moving that into teacher assistance salaries to benefits. Any questions throughout those budget amendments to the state public school fund? Next page. There at the top, you'll see that these two budget amendments are for Fund Eight. This is where we account for our individual grants, the Impact Day, GIRA, the the teen pregnancy prevention initiative, school nurse grant, items like that. So the first section there, this is P R C three oh eight. This is Impact Day. We typically at the beginning of the year budget six hundred thousand dollars until we receive our revenue during the year. What we do is is we increase that budget up to a level of revenue that we receive. So above and beyond the six hundred thousand, we received another five hundred and nine thousand. So I'm increasing that budget so we can use those funds for additional expenditures. So you'll see there the last three lines of that budget amendment, C three revenue. That's our three sources of revenue for Impact Day. So two of those sources were increased significantly. And then the third one there was reduced by one thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. But in total, we received additional five hundred and nine thousand above the six hundred thousand that we budgeted initially for Impact Day. Next section down, this is P R C six fifty-five. This is not an increase in funding. It's just reallocation of budget funds. This was a budget provision that was presented by Tiffany Mills, the absolute director there. She had reallocated six thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars out of staff travel and moved that into incentives for participants and supplying materials. Budget amendments. There'll be several at the next meeting. We've got federal, specifically we've got eight separate federal program reporting codes that we need to do some budget changes. So I'll make you aware of that the next meeting. Now, if you have any questions, we'll go to the expenditure reports. There's a report here that's eight and a half, fourteen. The first page, these, if you look at the top description there, Mr. Lynn, this is an expenditure report for only the month of April. As you'll see, the top, top row there, just under that, you'll see different funds. You'll see the local fund, Fund Eight, state public school fund, the federal fund, child nutrition and capital outlay. So direct your attention to the last row at the bottom of the page. Those would be the expenditures for each fund just for the month of April. So folks who are listening, for each of those funds, the total in the month of May or month of April, our total expenditure, one million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. So the more detail that I'm gonna go with will be the next page. This one, these are expenditure, this is an expenditure for a year of data. And what I want to emphasize would be the last three lines, the last three rows on the bottom of the page. This information is here to let you know how we are during the year, whether we're over budget or under budget within a particular fund. So after ten months, you would assume that we have eighty-three percent of our budget spent. So for state public school fund, and I'll start with local going across. We're under budget by nineteen percent. You can see that, Mr. Lynn?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The reason that we're over budget is because we like to spend the county's money first. We want, we want to indicate to them that we're using their funds that they've allocated to us. At the end of the year, we will not be over budget. Statistically, we can't. So I can look some expenditure out of that fund into this Fund Eight, Impact Day, where we increased our budget by five hundred and nine thousand. So I've got some leeway there. So we won't be over budget by the end of the year. The next two columns over for Fund Eight, where we have our individual grants. We're under budget by twenty-two percent. The state public school fund is over budget by four percent. But again, we will not be over budget by the end of the year. Federal fund, we're under budget by ten percent. Child nutrition, we're under budget by twelve percent. And the capital outlay, we're over budget by three percent. outlay, we're over budget by three percent. And the total expenditure year-to-date in all funds, sixteen million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Any questions about the expenditure reports? That last page, there's the grants, individual grants that account for in that fund eight. So this shifts over some of those individual grants, the month of day expenditures for each grant, the year-to-date, all expenditures for each grant, and then the total budget for each of those grants. What about the expenditure for us?
Is that what Mr. Johnson was saying there, that the STEM is right here, so you're
That, the STEM grant, that work, we don't know what that budget is. We simply ask for reversals to make the expenditures. That varies each year. That amount of expenditure varies. But we do get, we do get our reversals for the expenditure on the way. That can be anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars in a year.
Do I have a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented by Mr. Green? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Mr. White, facilities update.
He's not here, so I'm gonna be Mr. White.
Okay, Mr. White. Does I speak English? I'm sorry, this means federal program grants. I didn't do that on purpose. I'm.
I have your, I'd like to present the federal programs grants. We do not have a plan in the law. It says a get for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. They're telling us it's gonna come out this month, and I'm in debate through June. Although, we are, it is going to be a time of exceptional for exceptional children for the month of May. So I'll start with PRC forty-nine, which is part of the grant for preschool, children with disabilities. At this time, I can only go by this last year's allotment, which was twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and thirteen cents, and that was with carryover. And what we use that for is it funds one of our teacher assistants at the kids' place. And around now, it's only funding fifty percent of the one. And I have talked to them about that. They were going on the data from nineteen ninety-eight, and they're not up to that in all the years. And, you know, we, we have expressed, the directors have expressed a concern over that, because we have such a growing number of students with disabilities that are coming into our preschool, and we need more funding for that area. So hopefully, we'll meet in the future. PRC sixty is part of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act for children with disabilities, also act is thirty through twenty-one. Last year, it's the current usual allotment, with the carryover was three hundred and sixty-four thousand and ninety dollars and no cents. With these funds, we are able to fund three exceptional children's teachers, forty percent of an E C teacher, and two full-time teacher assistants. And we also are able to purchase a few supplies and materials, mainly for our highly-studied students who need different things to be successful in school. Turned over to the next page. This is our Title One funding, which is PRC fifty. This year's allotment with carryover was four hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-six cents. This ties along with the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is with this grant. It's based on our heartbeat, we are partially based on our heartbeat of our county, which last year was second, three point six-four percent at Robbinsville Elementary. Right now, Title One, we use a Title One fund for our elementary school. So with these funds, it's a school-wide program, and there's one main component is parental involvement, which is major, and they're emphasizing that, and we're trying to get the parents involved with Title One funding. But also, we pay for seven full-time teacher assistants, twenty-five percent of our behavioral is on, fifteen percent of the director's salary, twenty-five percent of administrative assistant's salary. Also, it funds the supportive research-based programs that we utilize that we have at Robbinsville Elementary, as well as supplemental materials to core. It does not pay for core instructional materials, just supplemental instructional materials. We also have a homeless set aside for students, and that is for homeless for all three schools. Moving on to PRC one oh three, which is Title Two, which is improving teacher quality. This is a grant that this year's allotment with the carryover was sixty thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. And we, you know, these funds to pay for a first-grade teacher, because the purpose of it is to retain teachers, provide quality, professional development, and we also have a good class size with it. Moving on to the last page, Rural Income Schools is a grant that we get that provides a little bit extra money. A lot with the level of carryover is fifty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. And we, this is in place and written for to help us with paying for the cost of a school nurse at R E S. And the last one is PRC one oh eight, which is Title Four. Oh, this year, a lot with the carryover was fifty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and sixteen cents. And this money is used to use for student support and academic enrichment, also to support healthy and safe students. And then this year, we'll be using the funds accordingly for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Any questions?
Hi, Chris Minn. Do I have a motion to approve the federal program grants as presented by Ms. Minn? Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Now, facilities update.
All right. So in addition to my absence, I just want to give you a update on the bleachers. And you got this, actually, Mr. Nelson, on your email last week. But this is from Jason Moreno, and he has indicated that we're on track to, for Southeastern Seating to install the rental bleachers by before Monday, May twentieth. So that should be, that should be coming up. We should be seeing some motion down very soon. And then LS three B, which is the architect firm that got the bid for the preliminary plans and the construction of the new facility, has sent, they said, the preliminary plans to the building committee. So that's where we are looking for comments on that, the building committee.
Edit. All right. Fiscal year twenty-five teacher contracts. Ms. Wiggins?
Yes. So in your packets, Ms. Knox will review those. You have a list of those in there in your folders. And I guess when you go into closed session, you'll review one, two, and four lifetime contracts. You should have a copy of all of those.
Okay. Personnel, Ms. Knight?
Yes, I'll have a list of personnel. I'll be sharing with you in closed session.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Pursuant to the Vision of North Carolina, statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, eleven, parentheses, the adequacy is three, and one forty-three dash three eighteen, eleven, parentheses, see, I'm going with Grand County Board of Education, first session, to receive files from the attorney for the Grand County Board of Education, which advice council will then review her view of attorney-client privilege. The advice will be generally legal advice about legal issues and legal matters. Pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, eleven, parentheses, see, I'm going with the Grand County Board of Education, going to close session. But it's for purposes, considering personnel matters, it's defined in the end of the law by North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, eleven, parentheses, eight, three, six, and North Carolina General Statutes, oh, six, that's three, one.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, you're now in closed session. All right, we're back in open session. Action items, personnel, Ms. Knight?
Yes. I'd like to request a leave of absence for Mallory Shamblin.
Do I have a motion to approve a leave of absence for Mallory Shamblin?
It's for next school year.
That's for next school year. So do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
I'd like to recommend in position of payroll specialist, Samantha Guffey.
Do I have a motion to approve Samantha Guffey as payroll specialist? Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed?
I'd like to recommend in position of CTE business teacher at Robbinsville High School, Tiffany Millsaps.
Do I have a motion to approve Tiffany Millsaps as a CTE business teacher at RHS?
So do.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I'd like to recommend as a CTE agriculture education teacher at Robbinsville High School, Adrian Watts.
Do I have a motion to approve Adrian Watts as CTE agriculture education teacher at RHS? Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I'd like to recommend as an exceptional children job coach at Robbinsville High School, Nikki Moody.
Do I have a motion to approve Nikki Moody as exceptional children job coach at RHS? So do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I'd like to recommend as an instructional substitute, Christine Anderson.
Do I have a motion to approve Christine Anderson as an instructional substitute?
Certainly.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I'd like to recommend the list of teacher contract renewals as presenting for one-year, two-year, and four-year contracts.
Do I have a motion to approve the teacher contracts as presented? So do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed?
Two seconds left. Thank you.
I believe you voted for the.
No, you.
You voted, I said. Okay.
That's all I have.
Hey, you said something else about.
That's it. We got to the contract room.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion for superintendent selection?
Before selection, I'd like to say thank you for everybody that applied, and you know, straight.
I think we gave a break of production.
But I'd like to make a motion to our board members.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? And it was unanimous. Congratulations. We're excellent.
Can you second that?
Yes, ma'am. I'd just like to say, as an old school personal guest, but I appreciate the interest that all that me showed in the super tenancy, all of your great employees. It wasn't an easy decision, but Lord does appreciate you.
Yes. I, I, I talk with Mr. Cooper, Mr. Madison's one of my friends, you know, and Lauren, you know, he called me his second dad one time. So when his, when his grandfather passed away, so that meant a lot. But I enjoyed the process. I really did. Thank God.
Mr. Chairman, there's a little bit of business, and I neglected to talk through the board about a contract and working one. What we'll need to do is, it's typically, it's done by the, I'll draft on the board's behalf, consult with you as the board chair and Mr. Carriers, vice chair, to negotiate a contract and bring it back. We'll try to have it done, and we're gonna move your regular June meeting to May twenty-eighth.
May twenty-eighth.
See if we can have it done then. And I don't know that the motion needs to include it, but I know you discussed having it be an additional two-year term, and so, because that's what you've done with your other superintendent decisions. So just, I'm putting that kind of on the record for you, that the board can expect. We're gonna come back with a, with a contract for approval in open session that you're, that you're May twenty-eighth.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Announcements.
So yes, so I believe Attorney Hinni mentioned that your next Board of Education meeting will be a special call meeting on May twenty-eighth at ten a.m.?
Yes. Yes.
That's all.
And all of us, of course, agree to that.
I need to ask a quick question. Who brought this back into open session?
I've got that, but it was Mr. Carriers' motion, and seconded by Mr. Allison.
Thank you.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
None of them are still in closed session. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm booked.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor?